We're live.
We're live, okay. Call the meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectment for March 3rd, 2021 to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, five selectmen are present as well as town council and the town administrator.
Uh, let's see, I'll have Steve Ruiz lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Isn't it the second?
Since he's on the screen.
Yes, it is the second.
Okay, he said the third, so.
Did I say the third?
Yeah.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Announcements, Alan.
Okay, I just have one. Give me a second here. Okay, as everybody knows, we're now an age-friendly community through AARP, etc. It'll be a survey that's going to be sent out through the COA mailing list. The survey is required as a finishing piece in order to apply for grants, etc. It's also going to be up on the town website. And there also, I think Matt's going to try and put it on Facebook so people can download it and actually email it back. We appreciate very much if people take the time and do it online or do it manually through the COA mail or again on the town website. This will help us, again, like I say, getting grants, etc., to be able to expand these COA programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'll do it later.
Uh, Jim?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of quick ones. We have a number of employment opportunities within the town. So I would, people should check out the website under Residents' Employment Opportunities. And that includes full-time, intermittent, summer positions. And, you know, just letting everybody know, there's a number of them out there in different areas. In addition, we have a number of openings on different boards. And we can always use some residents to step up and take part and be part of town government. And please consider applying. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy?
Yep, I have a few, thank you. Our community of Wareham has many opportunities for those who have food insecurity. The school continues to provide free meals five days a week to students who live in Wareham. In addition, the Y is providing free box lunch, food boxes, twice a week at two different locations on Tuesdays and Thursdays. On Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:30 to 5:30, the food is available with the Gleason Family YMCA. On the same days, the food is available with the East Wareham School on Depot Street from 10 to 12. Almost all of the town's churches have meals once a week as well as pantries. If you or your neighbor are in need of food, please feel free to reach out. All of those things that we've been talking about are on the town website now. Wareham Garden Club is awarding a $1,000 scholarship to graduating high school seniors and college students. Applicants should have been legal residents of Wareham for at least a year and have a minimum of a B or a 3.0 average. Scholarships are available for students with focus of study in one of more of the following areas. Horticulture, environmental studies, floriculture, land management, botany, biology, conservation, landscape design or architecture, forestry, agronomy, city planning, or allied subjects. High school students must be graduating in the spring of 2021 and have been accepted to a college or other post-secondary school. Scholarship applications will be available at area high schools' guidance offices. College students must be currently enrolled at a college, provide transcripts, and submit an application. All applications and materials must be postmarked on or before March 31st, 2021. Council and Agent continues to offer its Tuesday and Thursday Grab and Go meal, which must be reserved the week ahead of the time that you want to pick it up. The number to sign up for this program is 508-291-3130. Last week, I mentioned that the Wareham Library Foundation continues to look for donations from the citizens. In order to continue to have our library certified, the friends and of the library and the Wareham Library Foundation need to come up with about $65,000 between now and the year end. www.supportwarehamlibrary.org. You can go on there and make a donation or you can mail checks to the Library Foundation, Post Office Box 485, East Wareham, 02538. The Wareham Land Trust is offering free walks in the woods with specific programs. You can access the information at warehamlandtrust.org backslash category backslash events. The registration is still limited due to COVID, but you are able to get outside. On March 30th, from 9 to 10, the program is entitled "Birding at the Great Neck Audubon Sanctuary." On March 12th, you can learn basic botany at Mark's Cove from 2:30 onwards. On March 20th, at the Westgate Preserve, you can learn all about winter bugs, yuck, from 1 to 2. And on March 27th, the Tweedy and Barnes location is hosting Talking About Trees from 1 to 2. Changing gears a little bit, the New Bedford Symphony Orchestra is collaborating with the New Bedford Historical Society in a concert titled "Celebrating Black Culture" on March 20th. For more information, log on to www.nbsymphony.org. And interestingly enough, last week I talked about, you know, hang up or the week before. You get scam calls, it's the IRS, they're going to come and arrest you and, you know, all this other stuff. I got four the day after that I made that announcement. The IRS will never, ever, ever ask you for information over the phone. They will not threaten you. So if you're getting these phone calls, hang up. They are scams, okay? A lot of them are saying, oh, you're going to go to jail. You're not going to go to jail. You may lose some of your possessions if you don't hang up. It is a scam. It is a terrible time of year for people who are afraid of sometimes of our government. But I just want to assure you that the IRS does not come after people that way. Thank you.
Um, I got a call today for the IRS scam.
Yep, going to go to jail?
Ah, yeah, some, some sort of, you know.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, these have been going on for a while, so please don't fall for them. By way of announcements, just a reminder that the special town meeting, where the East Wareham Hospitality Entertainment Recreation District, as well as a couple of other articles relating to ball fields out at Westfield, will be had. That's still scheduled for Saturday, April 10th, on the football field, baseball field. Outdoor town meeting for noon time, so mark that off on your calendar. The moderator has gone to great lengths to try to assure a safe outdoor venue for people that will hold enough people, so I, you know, the best way you can thank her is to show up and exercise your right as a citizen legislator and weigh in on these issues, which certainly, you know, if you have the opportunity to do so. And just going back, you know, we got complaints about the trash and people say, how could you selectmen inflict this thing upon us, so on and so forth? We didn't inflict anything on anybody. People showed up at a town meeting and voted on it and exercised their rights as their citizen legislators. We don't spend a dime up here without your say-so, so, you know, please pay attention. I've said ever since I got on this board that we can do a lot more damage to you than the people in Washington can, so pay heed. I bet most of you showed up and voted either way in the presidential election. Well, you should show up and vote for other things that are important, especially the things that are going on right under your nose. Before I go to Citizens' Comments, I see some people that I think may be here and want to comment on the 61A solar projects and so on and so forth. Once again, we don't have this on the agenda, as I announced last week. We've gotten feedback from some of the boards. We're not going to be doing anything with this for the month of March. We put it off a month the last time to give the people who are interested in exploring the acquisition of the property an opportunity to, you know, try to define what the value is, formulate an offer, talk with the landowner and see if it's realistic to go ahead to try to purchase the property before we go ahead and make a decision. So once again, that's, that's not on the agenda. That's not something that's going to be decided tonight. We will make it very clear when it is on an agenda. And so I would ask people interested in that topic if they would just hold off for a bit until, you know, we, we, we will announce that it'll be on an upcoming agenda. Don't worry. And we'll ask the papers to carry that. With that in mind, is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight? If you would, we're operating under a different system tonight. So if there's a way for you, because I'm sitting here as a panelist. We're separated the panelists and attendees. Before, we were all the same and they just turned on the microphones for some people and not others during the meeting. So if there's anyone who would wish to address the board tonight, try to signal me. I see one hand up. I see two. I'm trying to see who the hands are associated with. All right, I got one under Q and A. Kathy Papalotto, "Has the method of accessing the meeting changed?" I would like to be able to speak during Citizens' Comments. Thank you. Uh, yes, it has. I asked the TV station to allow you to be a panelist and move you in sort of from the, from the bullpen of the attendees to the panelists, which is us. So if WCTV would move Kathy Papalotto in for us, please. Okay, Kathy, you're there. We need you to unmute and if you would like to appear on TV, we need to see your video.
Thank you.
Okay, we hear you.
I, I didn't have the option of changing my name to Nancy McHale, which is what it is. Sorry about that.
That's okay. It's like a note. I recognize you in person, so it's not a worry.
Well, okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
One of, I actually had two questions. And don't, don't shoot the messenger, but on the 61A question, did you get any kind of a response from Borrego or ADM in asking for more clarification about where their parcels are? We can't do a, an appraisal until we know what the parcels are.
Yeah, I had asked, and I'm sure I'll get a response soon. I had asked the Director of Assessing to look at the submissions to see if she would be able to provide those answers. She's going to get back to me on that, but, but we are working on that.
Okay, terrific. I appreciate that. And the other thing I wanted to say was that I know that Ken Buckland had submitted a amendment to the solar bylaws and asked that that be put on the warrant for Springtown Meeting. So I wanted to stand in support of that article. We have, Wareham has had a bullseye on its back recently. And this is an attempt to maybe slow down some of those conversions or taking down all of the forest. I know that the state is in the process of looking at how to rewrite these. Our current solar bylaws based on 2014 guidance. So I would ask for the board's support of the article that Ken has submitted. Thank you.
Yeah, it, that was kind of strange. He didn't attribute it to anyone in particular. The way he sent it to us was because he, he sent it along with two other articles that were at the request of the Planning Board. So we know that in that instance, you know, a vote of the Planning Board was taken. This he sent up and he said, he basically said, "Some people are interested in doing this." And he did, he did send it along for our consideration. What I, what I did say last week was that I would try to put together an article to create a, I initially conceived it as a solar bylaw study committee. Take a look at it. What can we do, so on and so forth. And I know you were, you were listening to the meeting last week because you did have a follow-up question. That's not something I wanted to rush to get onto the main warrant for town meeting tonight, but we are tonight simultaneously doing the process for the special town meeting within the annual town meeting. So that will open on March 19th and the warrant will close on March 30th. You know, assuming the board wants to hold a special town meeting, and I don't know why they wouldn't. And so, given the complexity of it, given the, the, the different interests that are involved here, both on the preservation side, but also on the town revenue side and everything else that's, you know, part of this whole question of solar and wind power development. Last week before my very eyes, somebody brought up wind turbines and, you know, people don't like those either. So, but yet that's a renewable energy resource that, you know, is part of what's on the table for how we're going to power ourselves going forward. So we're looking, I'm looking to ask the board to do something for the special town meeting. And, you know, if, if people are looked interested in a size limit or a moratorium or things of that nature, those are certainly things that'll be up for discussion.
I would just say that I don't think that those two things are mutually exclusive. I think that you could put this bylaw amendment on the warrant and also put on an article to have a more comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is what the, the Citizens Group has, has in mind anyway. It, in terms of the citizen input, there were two Planning Board members and the Conservation Agent, as well as the Conservation Chair and myself, as well as Ken Buckland. So there was, you know.
Interrupt. Two of, two of my employees met with the Citizens Group to create an article? Is this what I'm being told?
I.
Yeah, we're not going to get too far down that rabbit hole, but, you know, as far as, as far as this all goes, I, we are, we are voting to put on additional articles tonight. You know, my request to the board will be to hold off on anything to do with solar and put it on the special town meeting warrant. But you know what? I can ask on that, but I'm just one of four. So they, they can tell me to go pound sand and jam whatever they want on the warrant. All it takes is three of them. So if, if that's what they want to do, that's what they do. I can't predict what they will do. I really, I really can't predict what this bunch will do.
Aren't you one of five?
I'm just one of five.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your consideration and I appreciate being led into the room.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go down here and see. Uh, let's see, Richard Swenson would like to speak, so let's let Mr. Swenson into the panel.
I have a question. Should Ms. McHale be now removed from the panel? That's to Steve.
Yeah, I think as, as people pop up, then they, then they would go back to the attendees. Good evening, Richard.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for letting me speak.
Yep.
Wanted to give some background and context to the Citizens Group that Nancy referred to. The Wareham Planning Board has been discussing our solar laws for the last several months. And in early February, we agreed to put together a workshop with representatives from the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Wareham Land Trust, and the Director of Planning and Development. And the goal was to share thoughts on our current laws around solar and determine if there were opportunities for improvement. We held a initial workshop meeting on the 17th. Then it became very evident quickly that everyone felt our current laws were very lax and needed to be updated based on the current state of solar farms in Wareham. As you all know, we have some very large ones now and there's even more larger ones coming. It was suggested at this workshop that some simple zoning changes around size limits and clear-cutting restrictions could be proposed for the 2021 Springtown Meeting if we acted quickly. And we felt that if those changes were enacted, the workshop members felt that we would then have time necessary to gather additional public, public, technical, and scientific input and work on a comprehensive solar bylaw article for consideration at the fall 2021 town meeting. And to that end, Director of Planning and Development, Mr. Buckland, proposed a zoning article that has two simple elements. Solar farms would have a 10-acre cap. Our current bylaws have no cap on size, only a three-acre minimum. And secondly, solar farms would be restricted to land that had already been cleared for at least five years previously. We looked at this as a firewall-type article based on the current FALM solar bylaws, which are in place and approved by the Massachusetts Attorney General. In regards to the 10-acre cap, I've done some research and the town of Shirley, Massachusetts, has a five-acre cap in their, in their zoning laws that are dated of May 2018. This article still allows solar farm development just on a smaller scale and as opposed to a complete ban or a moratorium. There's my belief that a moratorium would have a much harder time getting through the Attorney General's office. Our workshop met one more time and unanimously agreed to support Director Buckland's proposal. At the February 22nd Wareham Planning Board meeting, Director Buckland shared this proposed article and the Planning Board has scheduled a public hearing for March 22nd to gather public feedback. Director Buckland submitted this article to you, the Board of Selectment, on the 24th and requesting, and requested consideration for the Spring 2021 Town Meeting warrant, which is being finalized tonight, as you mentioned. Finally, at the previous Board of Selectment meeting, there was discussion around the creation of an alternative energy review committee to examine our solar bylaws. I want you to know I totally support this idea. And this is exactly what our workshop intended to do once this article was approved at Springtown Meeting. A review committee, however, is a separate issue from this article and it should be evaluated on their own merits. So I'm here tonight to encourage the Board of Selectment to approve the assertion of this article and thus allow the citizens of Wareham to consider this strategy at the Spring 2021 Town Meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your remarks. Let's see, is there? I'm looking at the chat.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just a little confused because our, our Director of Planning, Community Development cannot submit anything without my approval. This is a little shocking and the Director of Planning, Community Development stressed that this was not his article. So now it's being framed as such.
Well, this is something to be discussed. If somebody wants to make a motion to put it on, I would suggest that any further discussion now isn't the time to have it.
No, it does lead to me for, there needs to be some house cleaning on my end, so.
Well.
I apologize to the board that this would be coming forward like this.
Well, it is what it is. That's, that's later on in the meeting, just in terms of whether it goes on the warrant. And of course, you know, what happens between you and employees is up to you and we don't need to hear about that either. Let's see, is there anybody else? I'm going to try to go off. Again, I'm trying to use this new system here and it's kind of weird for me here. I see a bunch of people listening in. If there's, there is a hand up. Hold on. I see two hands up. I click on it and I can't see who it is.
Catherine Garofoli.
Okay, yep, now we see with the hand, they're off to the side. Okay, yes, Catherine, we'll start with her.
Richard has to go up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman Titlebaum. I appreciate your patience and letting me on. I'm here tonight to make a couple of announcements on behalf of the Onset Bay Center. So as of Friday, we've opened up early registration for Wareham residents for our half-day and full-day youth summer programs. That incorporates a full-day Onset Bay Explorer Program, ages seven to 12, where they're getting basically the greatest experience of all the things that we have to offer, kayaking, paddle boarding, learning to shellfish. We're also going to have two half-day Learn to Sail programs, one for younger kids and one for teenagers. And we're really excited to announce that we are working with Mass Maritime Academy. They are going to work with us to get us top-notch cadets to help lead our sailing program this summer. So we're really thrilled that we have that opportunity to partner with Mass Maritime. And in the meantime, while we wait for summer, I'm also hiring several positions to help us lead these summer programs. That includes some exploration leaders and some program interns that I've submitted to the high school because we're looking for some high school applicants to really generate some local teenagers to come and work for us. And also looking for an intern to help us grow some oysters this summer to be part of our shellfish education program. So going back to the summer programs I was talking about earlier, the registration, as I mentioned, is open for all Wareham residents right now. We have several scholarships to provide to the Wareham community. And so I'm hopeful that people will take advantage of that. And they can reach me at 508-999-6363, extension 227. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the upcoming summer. And we're going to have lots of other exploration programs as well that include kayak tours for families. We're going to have an open sail where people who don't have previous sailing experience will take first spin out on our Odeia Sailor on Onset Bay. So we're really trying to provide as many diverse programs as possible to really get people outside and having fun in Onset. So just wanted to let the board know that this is happening right now. And we're really excited to start planning again for another big launch year.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate everything you're doing down there. And, you know, as the pandemic eases, certainly I hope that a lot more people can get involved and participate and make your jobs easier too, so that you're thinking about the instruction and, you know, the, the knowledge that you're imparting instead of worrying about whether, you know, kids are wearing masks and keeping six feet apart and all that fun stuff, so.
Well, you know, I feel like it's still valuable to have that in mind in terms of safety and crowd control and making sure we're providing quality programs. We have a really robust COVID plan in place that we're going to train our staff on thoroughly so that we're sure that what we're doing is keeping everybody safe.
Great, thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too. Okay, I believe there was a question, Wareham Slaving. I'm assuming that's Mrs. Slaven, so if we could let her in. There we go. Good evening. Is she there? She's got to turn on her microphone.
Alan just yelled at me. My mic's on now.
Yep, you're good.
You made a plea for citizens to come to town meeting so they can have a say in what's happening with our government. I'm just making a request that you submit, you allow all the articles coming before you to be placed on warrant so that the citizens can have a say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll give it a little bit longer. If anybody else wants to wave a hand at me, I'll wait about 15 seconds. So now that I finally figured out where I have to look for the hand. And otherwise, we will jump down to the public hearing that's on for 7:15. Okay, seeing none, let's commence with the public hearing on the application from DJP Corp., DBA The Jug Shop, 221 Main Street, Wareham, for a change of location from 221 Main Street, Wareham, to 2991 Cranbury Highway, East Wareham. Can we have a motion to open the hearing?
Move that we open the hearing for the application from DJP Corp., DBA The Jug Shop, 221 Main Street, Wareham, for a change of location from 221 Main Street, Wareham, to 2991 Cranbury Highway, East Wareham, under Chapter 138 of Mass General Laws.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. The hearing is now open. I will turn. I will turn it over to the applicant. Do you have that on the agenda in front of you, do you, Judy?
I did not actually print that page out. It's Mr. Patel, I believe.
I believe we have a couple of Patels who are representing different interests here, so I think we need to make sure we get the right Patel up to speak about the application. Patel, who is the applicant, please raise their hand. And, okay, that would be Dipin Kumar Patel. So if we could acknowledge him. Waiter will turn on his mic and appear, and... Yes, I've got it up in front of me, and he is indeed the correct person. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, you want to move your liquor store?
Yep.
Okay. And this is simply a transfer of location. There's gonna be no change in the corporate structure?
Nope.
Okay. I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward what you're looking to do here, so I will turn it over to questions from the board first. Alan.
Okay.
No questions.
Patrick.
I have a question. He owns the one at CVS Plaza, too, right?
Correct, yep.
So you have two on Main Street.
No, I don't own them. My dad and my uncle owns. I mean, my uncle owns that one.
Well, I... Okay.
I manage that one.
You manage it, okay. I knew there was something, some connection there. Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Thank you. Jim. Any questions for the applicant?
I'll wait. I will wait until after we have... Will there be public comment or no public comment?
Oh, yeah, it's a public hearing, and we're gonna... We also received petitions from people that I'm gonna ask the board to take administrative notice of as part of the hearing. But for now, I'm just giving everybody an opportunity to ask Mr. Patel questions if they haven't. So...
I will pass at this point in time.
Thank you. Judy.
No, thank you. I have no questions to Mr. Patel.
I don't have any questions myself. Before I turn it over to public comments, however, we have to acknowledge, and I'm gonna ask for a motion for the board to take administrative notice of the fact that we did receive a petition from the Liquor Locker with 102 signatories, all claiming, of course, we don't verify these things in this instance, but they're all claimed to be residents of the town of Wareham who are opposed to the move. We received another petition from the Onset Village Market containing 25 signatures with substantially the same language in opposition to the move. So I would ask the board for a motion to take administrative notice of these petitions that have been submitted to us so that they are part of the hearing record.
You have a motion from Patrick and a second from me.
I do, okay. Is there any discussion about these? Does anybody want to say anything about them, or do we just want to move on with the vote?
Move on.
I think we've all looked at them.
Roll call vote. Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Now comes the portion of the hearing where I'm gonna ask anybody who is in support of Mr. Patel's application to move his liquor store from 221 Main Street to 2991 Cranberry Highway. So please raise your hand if you would like to speak in favor of this move. Okay, I see there's a Matthew Porter with his hand up. If we could put him into the chat, or actually put him into the room with us, if you will.
Are you going to ask the speakers if they're citizens? If they're residents?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening, board. My hand had actually been raised prior to. I'm the attorney of record. I was trying to get the board's attention to give a...
Ah, okay.
But I realize that ship has sailed. So, you know, certainly we're here representing Dipin Kumar. The move itself is fairly self-explanatory, but just a couple of things to point out. Certainly, we believe it'll benefit not only Mr. Patel's business, but it'll be in the best interest of the parking that he currently has. It'll be a new, built-out, larger store, be able to offer greater selection of wine and craft beers. Also, with it being located within that plaza, certainly be convenient for the members of town. But with that, I realize that the presentation aspect of it is already passed, so feel free to move forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll go back and see if anybody else has their hand raised in support of the move. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna ask in the other direction. Is there anyone who would like to state their opposition to the board? And if so, please raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you one at a time, and you can have your say. Yes, I see Sue Haspatel has... I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that right. Has the hand raised, so let's please let this person into the meeting. Good evening.
Hi, how are you, sir?
Good, thank you. The first question I've been reminded to ask is if you're a resident of the town.
No, I am not. I'm the manager of Liquor Locker.
Okay, then I would ask leave of the board to let you speak, given that you have a commercial interest, but that you're not a resident.
Sure moved.
If any members have a problem with that, please let me know.
I'll second Mr. Troppiano's motion to let him speak.
Okay, so we have a motion to allow you to speak by Patrick, seconded by Judy. Roll call vote. Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Go ahead, please address the board.
Thank you for letting me speak. Yeah, like I said, my name is Sue Haspatel. I'm the manager of Liquor Locker. We personally believe it's not a good move because within five minutes of that location, there are already three existing liquor stores. There is Mayflower Liquors, and down the street is our store, Liquor Locker, and there is Depot Liquors. So probably within five to six minutes, there are three liquor stores that already existed, and this will be the fourth one. We don't necessarily see any public need for another business to come in. It creates, not the sake of competition, it's just we don't see a public need, and we ask a lot of our customers, we do a little survey, which we turn into the town hall, and majority of the customers says, yeah, it doesn't really make sense to have another liquor store, especially it's literally behind our location. So we don't see a public need for it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the board for Mr. Patel? Okay, seeing none, I will go back. Thank you, Mr. Patel. I will go back. I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. Is there anything further that the board wishes to inquire about? If not, then let's have a motion to close the public hearing.
Before I make that motion...
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, before I make that motion, I just want to indicate that all of the paperwork is in order. So...
Right.
Thank you.
You can motion it, Patrick.
Sure moved.
I'll second the motion to close the hearing.
Okay, we have a motion before us to close the public hearing. Roll call vote. Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim. Jim, you with us? You seen benefits?
We still have to... Can we still have discussion?
Oh, yeah, we discussed afterwards. Public input time is over with.
Okay, yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, the public portion of the hearing is now closed, and now we can deliberate amongst ourselves on the application and go ahead and decide the question here. Start off with Patrick.
Okay, so I'm not in favor of this move. It causes a problem with the other places that are nearby. Liquor Locker, I happen to know, is very... Probably doesn't do very well at all. I mean, they're doing, they're surviving, but I know that they have a difficult time. Mayflower Liquors, the Depot Liquor Store, that's three, like he says, within a very short distance. And as you know, I was not in favor of Liquors and More out in, you know, West Wareham because they were putting too much tax on Peppins and Anchor and all those guys. So the separation where it is now is fine. I mean, I have no problem with it being where it is, but I don't want to put that right in the plaza because basically you're cutting off those other guys. You're adding another bit of competition to them. And especially now during COVID, where everybody's struggling. I mean, to add another person in the mix in there, I mean, if things were booming, you might say, well, maybe there's a need for it, but in this case, I don't believe there's a need for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, any remarks?
No, I'll be consistent with basically when we had the wines and more, liquors and more. It's a very simple thing. I've been in business for years. There's a thing called restraint of trade. I don't believe we have the right to sit and restrict where people located all as far as this type of business. There are certain things we have rights for within our zoning laws or bylaws. This particular case here, we do not. I think we're getting ourselves in trouble if we start to go past our rights. Thank you.
I think we should get an answer from counsel about that because I don't believe that's the case.
No, no, no. I think he's expressing an opinion. He's not reading us law, so I don't think we have to go to counsel on this. Let's see, Jim.
I look at, you know, is there a public need for another liquor establishment within that area? And now, it seems like there's plenty of them around there. And so you know, that's where I kind of, how I'm kind of looking at it, and that's the only way I really should look at it if I have any concerns at all. And so that's where my train of thought is at this point in time. I don't know which way I'll go. I'm just saying that is there a public need? So, thank you.
Judy.
Thank you. I believe that all businessmen have the right to make a decision about where they have their business and what their business is, and I would leave it at that.
Okay. For myself, I'm not insensitive to the concerns of other liquor store owners in the area where Mr. Patel is proposing to move his shop. I think the issue is, though, as the other Mr. Patel told us, well, you know, we've got, you know, three or four liquor stores within five minutes. If you look at where the location currently is for the jug shop, you could pretty much say the same thing. You've got Wareham Liquors up the street. You've got What's-a-Faces that's out near Carmisa.
Sullivan's.
Yeah, Sullivan's. You got Sullivan's out there. You've got the one at the crossing, and I suppose if you drove fast enough and hit the lights, you could get there in five minutes. You got the one next door to the crossing. So it's kind of a thing where no matter where anybody wants to go, they're gonna be near somebody else. You know, unless you put it the other side of Route 25, and nobody's clamoring for us to put liquor stores out there just yet, you know, you're gonna be near somebody else if you move. I think it's just a constant, sort of a combination of the fact that we have, what, 13 package stores or something like that in town? And, but they're all, you know, located in one half of the town, which is the area that's south of 495 and 25. So there's no way they can move without impacting somebody, so that brings you down to the public need thing. What resonated with me was that Mr. Patel told us he was gonna have a larger store with more variety. And, you know, in today's market, you know, it's not enough to have Budweiser, Schlitz, and, you know, Coors on tap. You know, especially as people get into the craft beers, they get into the wines and all this, that, and the other thing. They're very savvy consumers now. They go online, they read reviews, they want to go try a certain brand of wine or something from, you know, this valley in France or that place in Argentina. And, you know, the bigger the store is, the more consumer choice they have. So I think that in that regard, the public need might be fulfilled with a move. So those are just my thoughts.
I have one more thing. I'd like to add one more thing. Problem is, and I think we're setting a precedent as well, is now what do we do with the marijuana places that want to move? They want to go someplace near another marijuana facility. Why should they not be allowed to move? Why couldn't they go anywhere they want? You know what I mean? So now we're setting a precedent, in my opinion, when we say, okay, we're not gonna use our rights, which it is, and I think we should ask counsel this. It's our right to decide where they go and what the need is. And thank God it is, because otherwise, you could have seven people on top of each other and not serve the public good at all. Just saying. Just remember this. When something else comes up, you gotta be consistent.
Well, we won't be making that decision. If somebody wants to change the structure, especially of the retail marijuana in town, they're gonna have to go to town meeting, so that'll blow right past us to a higher authority. So I think there's a distinction there, but, you know, I am mindful of what you're saying here, Patrick. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move the Board of Selectmen grant the application from DJP Corp., DBA The Jug Shop, 221 Main Street, Wareham, for a change of location from 221 Main Street, Wareham, to 2991 Cranberry Highway East Wareham, under the provisions of Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Law.
Thank you.
We need, we gotta make that subject to getting the final plan and all that, or the layout of the place and all that, because we're required to have all that. You know that, right?
That was in there, right?
Was it in there? I didn't see it.
Yes, sir, it was. All of the paperwork is in there.
All right, if it's in there, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
No.
Jim.
No.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. It carries three to two. The paperwork has to be signed, Mr. Patel. Give us a couple of days to get that done, and the office will get a hold, make an appointment to pick it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for the hearing. You know, these aren't easy decisions, as you see. We're not always unanimous on them, and, you know, the two people who voted against it had pretty good reasons to vote the way they did, too. Thank you very much.
May I make a suggestion, sir, that we go to 9C and hear from the Director of Assessing?
She is actually, I have spoken with the town administrator. He is actually looking to put these on the special town meeting warrant. So in that instance, I spoke with Jackie and said, would you like to come in at a future date? So we're gonna schedule her in another week or two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Board comments, let's go back to those. Anybody want to talk? Alan.
Real quick. The South Coast Hospital, South Coast Health Group, which had COVID shots last week, will only have COVID shots first time this Saturday only due to lack of supply. Anyone who is scheduled for a second shot at any one of their three facilities will go ahead and go at the card date and time that they were given. There'll be shots for that starting next week on Monday. Depending on what happens with the Coast Johnson and Johnson and everything else going on, they plan to hopefully be back open running a full-week schedule. We should have answers by that, by Thursday or Friday. Again, please do not call the YMCA if you're trying to get into the Gleason. The Y is strictly a facility that's provided for South Coast Health. South Coast Health, basically, again, books the appointments through MyChat, notifies you to go ahead and apply. There is a hotline number at South Coast Hospitals on their website if you do want to speak to someone, but the only way you're gonna get an appointment is through the MyChat system right now. Thank you.
Thanks. Patrick.
Yeah, let me, you know, I was supposed to go to a... To a, a, a look at the school today, the new school. And I didn't get to go, but lo and behold, they actually did a video while they were going around. So I got to watch it, what, what was going on. So it's kind of cool. It's really fun to see how far they have gotten and, you know, all the different changes that happen every time they do the, I think they, we. They do these like once a month, and the changes are incredible as it goes along. I mean, now you're really starting to see. You know, what, what stuff is, you know what I mean? You, you know, this is the gym, you know, this is the cafeteria, you know, this is the kitchen. You know that these are the offices for this, and you know, the different rooms and stuff. So it's really kind of cool. So I would suggest. That I know they posted it on Facebook. And if anybody wants to actually see how the school's coming, what it looks like. Tune into Facebook and, and get a look at it. It's takes a bit. It's about an hour plus. A matter of fact, I think it's closer to like an hour and a half, but it's, it's a good, good thing to take in. And since everybody out there is spending a lot of money to have this, it might be nice to see what's going on, you know?
Yep.
All right.
Good point. Jim.
Yes. I had spoken with. The Chair earlier regarding. The, the Trava. Vote we took last week, I believe on the agenda, it was supposed to be for. Authorization to. Enter into negotiations for a host community agreement, not to approve a host community agreement. So I think we erred in our, our vote. At least from watching the. Because we, I think we voted to approve.
Well, I think, I think it went on the agenda incorrectly, I think is what happened, Jim. I think we had actually previewed. I, I gotta go back and check this before we do anything.
You gotta look at the video.
What happened was back in January, we did vote to have negotiations. And I think it went on the agenda last weekend correctly. It may be that we needed to do an a, a confirmatory vote. If that's the case, but let me look into it first and I'll get.
Yeah, so, so let me finish here. Because what we were provided for information was their business plan. Not a host community agreement to vote on. So I, I'm not against it. I, I just don't, you know, I, I can't approve something I haven't seen. So. I just wanted to bring that to your attentions.
Yep.
Your attention, and if you take a look at it, and, and again, I'm not against it, just. You know, negotiate it and then bring it back and say, this is what they've. Proposed and we've agreed to, and, and then we can authorize something that's actually been negotiated.
Yeah, I'm looking at this. I just made a note to myself and it says, look at what was presented versus what was voted. So I'll take a look, see.
Yeah, I, I watched, I watched the video again. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Judy, anything?
Yes, I had asked you. Earlier today to do something and we forgot to do it. Nan Evans.
Oh, yeah.
Earlier this week, Nan Evans was a very important part of the Charter Review Committee. And in her professional career, she was a champion of equity and equality. And I would like to suggest that we have a moment of silence. This lady died with grace. And with. She had an honorable service to this town, as did her family. So I'd ask for that moment of silence.
Yes. Yes, thank you all.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, jumping down, COVID nineteen update. Anything from the Town Administrator on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was only twenty-eight new cases, but unfortunately, we did have another one more death last week, so. You know, we still have to be careful.
Yeah. Further in that regard, I'm looking to take meetings back live fairly soon. So. Bear in mind.
Not happening.
Not happening.
Not happening. So you guys are all getting shots.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I haven't been able to, I haven't even tried, but just, just a quick side here. You know, since we've been wearing masks and social distancing. I'd knock on wood, I shouldn't say it. I haven't had a cold in a year. You know, so I, I don't, you know.
No, I think that's right, and you know what? This makes, this kind of broaches the point for like next year to wear one anyway. While you're during the winter, so you don't get the flu or anything, right? Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, a lot of people do that. I mean, you know, most of you know, I spend a lot of time in Quincy, which has a large Asian population. And where, you know, China and Asia are typically the places where the, where the flu begins. It's always interesting in the wintertime to see, you know, you'll go in the supermarket and half the people. Who appear to be of Asian descent are wearing the masks and, you know. But before it was always, you know, I always thought in the back of my mind, well, gee, maybe that's a bit of an overreaction. I don't know why they're doing that. Turns out they were a hell of a lot smarter than me. So I think that's a good thing to follow. If you're vulnerable to the flu. I never get it. It doesn't really bother me, but if you're vulnerable to it, this will protect against that too. So I think we've learned some things here.
I don't think, I don't mind wearing them at all. I don't know about you guys, but it doesn't bother me in the least.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment from the Board of Health? I've been attending their meetings. In their last meeting, they noticed that the trend of the number of cases was going down. But they, all of them believe that we should continue with the social distancing, we should continue with the masks, we should continue to be extremely careful. So I'm just, that would be my liaison report for the Board of Health, but that is their message. Don't, don't do a Texas. And.
Make perfect.
Texas, you know, they're opening everything up. It's, it's, it's an asking for trouble in their opinion.
Yep. I agree. Anything else, Derek?
Nope, that's just wearing a mask and the discovery of using soap while washing your hands has made a big difference, so.
Did this earlier, remember?
God has had to teach you what to do. Okay, we understand.
Interesting mask.
Okay, trash disposal update.
Mr. Chairman, the, the barrels should, will be delivered. To municipal maintenance as a staging area to be delivered soon. I've, we've received at least a hundred and twenty opt-out applications that we've approved. About four that have not been approved. Some of them where somebody said, wrote. I have a different hauler and want to use them, so I'm opting out. Well, that's, you know, that's not an, an opt-out. But most, you know, we're basically at, you know, ninety-plus percent of approval, including the senior. We've gone through a lot of senior as well, senior abatement, which has been great and a lot of seasonal, so. It's been working well. Those are time-consuming, you know, those all have to be done by. By hand, but we should have a, a finalized list going to ABC and we'll continue to receive these and, and go through them. You know, I think I was running through a pile of those Selectman Slaven was talking about last week. And I, I think he was, he was almost a little confused at who is this nice guy actually approving things?
Way too easy.
It's rare that he gives money back, folks, very rare.
No, it's, it's going well, and we actually, the, the interesting thing is right now. We just hit a little over two thousand transfer station only. Which Selectman Muniz will remember, that was kind of right in the wheelhouse of what we, we had estimated, which, you know, that's. It's actually kind of nice to see that, so.
You know, I, I'd like to say one thing, if I can.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things, we, we make fun of Derek sometimes about, you know, his cheapness. But, you know, there's not, I've not met a town administrator, and as you know, I've been around here for a bunch. Okay, I've never met a guy that cares more about the community that he works in. Or, in fact, cares about the, the amount of money they spend. The amount of money that the government puts on people or anything else. So he's just as cheap with the money that he gets. As well as being cheap with your money. Everybody should understand that. That guy is top shelf. You know, I'm just, I just, you never get enough of this, Derek, and you deserve it.
Thank you, Selectman Trumpiano, I appreciate that.
That was a great lead into his contract negotiations that are gonna be on the agenda soon.
Another twenty percent increase.
Yeah.
Just one comment.
That was a negotiating position. Alan.
Yeah, I just, again, you know, we've been thanking Jim all along for the work. Transfer station never would have happened without his work on that. We never would have got to that point. Again, you know, I have to thank Derek as well as Patrick did. I've had no phone calls, no complaints, nothing at all in the last five days. We've all had hundreds of calls and emails, et cetera, before that. The program has really been put together as best as possible. We've addressed the needs of, we never addressed everybody's needs, but we've addressed. A substantial majority of the people's needs, and it's been a very fair and equitable piece. So again, we should thank everybody involved with us.
Yep. Do we lose Jim?
Yeah, I think we, I can't, can't see him anymore.
Hold on.
I think we lost him.
Did they move him out into the Outer Harbor?
Well, that's what I'm checking. I'm checking the Outer Harbor right now. That's a good way to put it, the Outer Harbor.
Yeah, the poor guy.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take note of the fact that Mr. Muniz departed the room at eight o'clock, I think.
He might be, he might be having a computer issue.
Yeah, I'll text him and see what's going on. So we don't have the, the presentation from the Director of Assessing, so we'll go down to D. We need the confirmatory vote to approve the. Collective bargaining agreement that we already authorized in executive session. State law requires us to do it again in open sessions.
Okay, go ahead, you read it.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Wareham Police Sergeants as previously discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay, motion to confirm the agreement by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero on that one. And let's see. Appointment of Town Council. Now wait a minute to see if Jim would like to come back and weigh in on this one.
Okay.
You know what? And he should be around for the votes. I just texted him to see what he says, but. Let's go down to the discussion and vote. On process for calling the special town meeting. I'm gonna have to drag that up.
I got it right here. If you want me to.
Yeah, it'll take me two seconds. Once I get. Past all these signatures.
I can put my cat mask back on.
Gonna sing a dance too?
No.
There we go. Okay, and this is gonna be in the form of what I hope will be a, a motion here. Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen, fifty-four Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. O two five seven one. Process for calling a special town meeting within spring annual town meeting. For April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty PM. Tuesday, March second, twenty twenty-one, Board of Selectmen establish all dates for completion of a warrant for the special town meeting. That's what I'm asking the Board to authorize tonight. Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one, Board of Selectmen vote to hold the special town meeting on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. And to provide notice thereof on Wednesday, March tenth, twenty twenty-one. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter, section two dash four A and C, and to open the warrant effective Friday, March nineteenth. That's according to the Home Rule Charter at two dash four C, which is ten days' notice before the warrant closes. Wednesday, March tenth, twenty twenty-one, last day to post upon Town's principal bulletin board and the town website. Notice of intention of Board of Selectmen to call the special town meeting for April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. And to post the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one opening and March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one closing dates of the warrant. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter, two dash four C, twenty-four hours after voting the date the warrant opens. Monday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, last day for submission of articles and/or petitions to be inserted in the warrant. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter, section two dash four C, ten days or more after the warrant opens. Tuesday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, Board of Selectmen officially close the warrant. This is also under Wareham Home Rule Charter, section two dash four C, ten days or more after the warrant opens. Friday, April second, twenty twenty-one, last day to post the special town meeting warrant upon the Town's principal bulletin board and the town website. And to deliver a copy of the warrant to the Town Moderator and to the Chairman of the Finance Committee. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter, section two dash four D. Special town meeting warrant to be delivered at least twenty-one calendar days before the commencement date of such meeting. And then finally, Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, commencement of special town meeting. So those are the dates.
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt the process?
Second. Third.
Okay. It was a second?
Yes.
It was a third even.
Second, okay, second by Patrick apparently, and a third by Alan. Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
I still don't see Jim. I'm gonna check the waiting room and make sure he's not hiding there. No. This is weird.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to get him back in, sending him the link and such, so he is, he is adamantly trying to get back in.
Okay, he is. Okay. Wait one second, I guess.
May I do some motions on minutes then?
Well. You know, I'll just call for the vote and I'll ask him if he wants me to reopen, to re-vote, because it's the same meeting, we can do it. If he's interested. Yeah, I'll, I'll call for the vote on the process now. Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, that's four zero zero. Yeah, go ahead with minutes.
Okay, I move that we approve the minutes of the July twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting, all were present. As well as the September first, twenty twenty, where all were present.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve minutes by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call vote, Alan.
I think, for some reason, Judy cut it off the first one. Could you just repeat the dates, Judy? I'm sorry.
Certainly, July twenty-first, twenty twenty, and September first, twenty twenty, and all members were present for both.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, Patrick.
Patrick, just.
Sorry, yes.
Yes, Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. We still don't have Jim, so why don't we jump down to Town Administrator's report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't, don't have anything else for you, so, hi.
Alan, you can kill some time tonight.
There really isn't much of anything, unfortunately. All we have is the Housing Choice Bill that came through that, for the governor wanted and got signed. I basically, I think Jim was also in the, monitored the meeting as well today from the State House that we were on. There's a large amount of issues as far as zoning, obviously. We have the, going from two-thirds to a simple majority. There's even items such as two communities can work together to share revenue, which has never happened before. There's also things, if you're an MBTA community, which people I don't think realize Wareham is, even though our assessment is. Is netted out by, I, I believe Derek confirmed our GATRA charges, but we are part of the, you know, the MBA commu- community. So they have a thing called a, a, basically a bill to write as far as affordable housing or housing. Within, I think, three quarters of a mile of an MBTA station, et cetera. If you don't comply with these rules, you then can't apply for mass works grants, et cetera. There's certain types of cluster buildings they're gonna allow. And you have to go through all of it, so I got ahold of Ken because I wasn't sure whether or not he had, you know, tuned into the meeting as well. I think I may have messed up and not forwarded him the information on this from last week. So he went through and downloaded the bill, and I think I also copied Mr. Sullivan, as I usually do, and Ken about this. And Ken proceeded to break the pieces out, so we basically forwarded information to the moderator, to the Town Council. to the Town Council, you know, as necessary besides the board and everything on these things, because they will affect town meetings coming up now as well. There's quite a bit of stuff that has to be gone through. It's a very encompassing bill. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Patrick, any liaising?
No, I kind of did it already.
All right, Judy?
By the way, I just want to say one thing if I can.
Go ahead.
The reason why I didn't make the thing today is because I have a huge goat flare up and I can't walk. I couldn't even get highly get to the john, so that's why I didn't get there. It wasn't for any other reason.
Beautiful, thank you. Yeah, the invitation originally came to us, but then they said, wait a minute, that was just supposed to go to Patrick as a member of the School Building Committee. It was interesting. They, they wouldn't let in any of the rest of us come for insurance reasons. So, but they, but while we're on that topic, they did say if the board wanted to, they could set up a tour for us. So if, if people want to go, let me know, and we'll arrange it with the School Building Committee. Jim, you're back, sort of?
Yeah, all right, good.
Yeah. I don't know, I think I might have an unstable connection. They're asking about my video and I can see myself. I don't know if you can see me.
We can see you now.
Yeah, I guess that was the other connection. They had to swap me over again from the link that Derek sent me.
Okay.
They put me in the waiting room. Again, so I guess it's my link. It's been kind of unstable, so I had missed a lot of what Mr. Sullivan was saying related to the recycling and the solid waste. But I caught parts of it, and so just continue on, no sense in.
Okay.
I can watch it on TV tomorrow.
Yep, we did, we did confirm collective bargaining agreement with the sergeants. And the other vote we took was for the process for calling the special town meeting. So those were the only votes we took. We, we, I tried to hold off so we could get to the warrant articles. Because we've got a couple of things to do there. So shifting gears on that. Jim and I talked quite a bit today about Article 14, which is the update to the FEMA floodplain bylaw. And, you know, at Jim's sort of urging, prodding, whatever you want to call it, yesterday, the Director of Planning managed to get a walk back some of the language, if you will, or allowed us to put in language regarding variances in certain zones and things of that nature. But the two of us believe that there is some more work that should be done with this with the state, because they basically sent out a boilerplate kind of form. Jim and I would like to take the time to go through it with council and come back and maybe have some more back and forth with the state. The concern here is, to the extent that the federal and state governments would allow more to go on on our coastline than what our existing law already does. And I think I, you know, Jim can jump in, you know, if I mischaracterize it. But I think our concerns are, we don't, if we don't have to do that, then let's take the time, let's put this on the special warrant instead and get it done right. Rather than, you know, have a bunch of people say, oh, but wait a minute, you passed this thing. Now I can put up my, you know, 52-room mansion on the sand all of a sudden, or something like that. So that's kind of the concern here. So what I would ask for is a motion to take.
To remove Item 14, the update to the FEMA floodplain bylaw, off the spring 2021 annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
And Alan had a question?
All I want to just make sure is, we all know we have until the beginning of July. We just have to get it done by then, because if we don't, then we have a real problem.
Right. And just, and we also discussed, you know, you get lumpers and splitters. And this is kind of a lumper, because one has to do with Article 2, Section 220, and the others are Article 4. So they put them both together and like, so you got to vote for both and not one unless you want to, you know, ask to divide it or split it on town meeting floor. So, you know, would be better to get it ironed out beforehand and than not, and if you want to present it as one article. Otherwise, I have concerns, and we discussed this last time too. And everybody's in favor of the, the maps and what is that, Article 2, Section 222? Not a question about that whatsoever. It's the Article 4 section. And those changes in there. And so anyhow, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to pull this off for the time being. Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 5-0-0. So that will come off and we will ask the Director of Planning an assessment to resubmit and, you know, perhaps Jim's way of doing it in two separate stages is the better way to go. So we'll, we'll convey that along as well. The other addition to the warrant that, that we had found, this is something Judy picked up on that we omitted from, that had been before us from prior town meetings, but we didn't take it up because it wasn't financial in nature, was the town meeting endorsement of the 2020 master plan. You know, I know Mr. Swenson and others put a ton of work into this, and it's, it's time we, we got this thing before the town meeting body and had them weigh in and endorse it. I think that's sort of the frosting on the the master plan cake, and I think we should get that done.
So I would move that we, that we place the town meeting endorsement of the 2020 master plan on the warrant for the 2021 spring annual town meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion to put that on the warrant by Judy, seconded by Alan. Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim? Did we lose Jim again?
No. Oh, he might be frozen.
Looks like he's frozen.
He's frozen.
I'm gonna yes out of him.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, we had two articles come in today from Community Preservation. One is the annual allocation of the fund reserves, which requires 10% of the total taxation plus state receipts that we get from Community Preservation Act. There are three areas that 10% at least has to go into. Those are open space and recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. They've come in, and also 5% for administrative costs. They've committed $65,000 for administrative costs, which is 5% of the total, and $130,000 for each, which I described earlier. So can we have a vote to put that on the warrant? This is a routine article.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that's 5-0-0. There's also a request from Community Preservation for $830,000 in funding to go to the Littleton Drive affordable housing development off of Swiss Beach Road. So they've, they've asked us to put that on the warrant as well.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Judy, seconded by
Alan.
Alan, any discussion? Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 5-0-0 on that. If anybody wants to, we can talk about the article that doesn't, the orphan article, if you will, for the 10-acre thing, if somebody wants to bring that up.
I'll bring that up. And I, you know, I believe, and seeing we have the charter expert on the board, the directors can submit directly to the selectment for articles. And I'm not trying to get in between anybody's positions, or I don't know what the internal mixes are here. So, and you know, I, I had suggested that, you know, it might be a good idea for them to do it as a citizens petition. But it's their choice on what they wanted to do. If it was a citizens thing, and it was a group, and as Mr. Slaven correctly stated, Mr. Swenson had brought it up, and they kind of put together the group at the planning board meeting. And, you know, two from the planning board, one being Mr. Buckland, one being Mr. Swenson. No, was Mike King on it too, maybe? I can't, I don't remember.
Mike King was on it.
And then two from Concom. Yeah, and so this was a recommendation from that group overall. So, you know, again, I don't know what the internal, internal workings are between the directors and the town administrator, but I thought the directors could direct, could actually submit articles. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Mr. Chairman, this group was established by the planning board, which means I was subject to open meeting. There's no minutes. There was no agendas.
So it was a working group.
They established it as a planning board group. This is not, this is not.
A working group.
Well, I mean, listen, we can, we, you know, we can parse this, and I think, you know, some of us could come down on the side of whether this was a subcommittee, and somebody else might say it's a working group. Again, you know, what I asked the board was, was for its indulgence to give me the time to try to work on, you know, the, the study group, which I think is important going forward. You know, this, I think, I think this is, you know, something that certainly could come back as a planning board article. It could come back as an article requested from the Director of Planning directly, but that wasn't how it was really forwarded to us. I think to avoid any issues, we might be better off waiting here, but I'll let Patrick go because he's been wagging his finger at me.
I'm wagging. All right, so I did a little homework for you, and it takes 2.5 acres per meg, a solar field meg. So at 2.5 acres per meg, you could get four, basically four megs. What is it? 1, 2, 3, 4, four megs onto a 10-acre site. The problem you have here is that the way the thing is, so the way we're talking about doing this, is what would keep somebody from taking a 28, 20-acre parcel, subdividing it in half to two parcels, and then putting one on each of the 10, 10, 10 pieces? You know what I'm, you get what I'm saying? They could easily manipulate the system because it hasn't been thought through properly, in my opinion. All right, now, I think we need a solar, a comprehensive solar bylaw. And that's going to take some work. But I think we need a comprehensive solar bylaw to keep this stuff in control and to piecemeal this and throw it out there and think it's going to solve the problem. Not. The other thing is, is when they, well, let's say on 10 acres, they couldn't possibly put four megs when you come right down to it, because there's a bunch of things that are required. There's infrastructure and so on that has to be included in the site, which would have to be included in every site. And hypothetically, if you had a 10-acre parcel and you stripped the trees off of it, then you had another 10-acre parcel and you stripped the trees off of it, and you take another plane and you strip the trees off of it, how does that save anything? You know what I'm saying? It doesn't really fit the bill. You know, I mean, what it needs is, we need to think about other alternatives and all that kind of stuff, in my opinion. That's just what I'm saying. I think it's not ready for prime time.
Okay, thank you. Alan?
Basically, what Patrick is saying is correct. The, I believe the last 40-acre project generated 6 megawatts. We actually bought that. The credits from Stage Power way back in the beginning, so the numbers are a little bit off. This particular item that they're talking about putting through was really not, I won't get into whether it's a real group or not. I think it was like a site by that came up during a planning board meeting, which really has, as Derek said, their issues. The bottom line is that what they wanted to put through required five years being cleared ahead of time. So nobody can come in and do 10 acres, 10 acres. You can take, you know, six 10-acre watts if they're all cleared for five years, and you can build solar fields in each one of them. But that's why my concern was in this particular suggestion, was I didn't know why there was a maximum of 10 acres, because it says it has to be, land has to be cleared for at least five years. And obviously, going forward, we do have a project, which is going off subject, I'll do it quickly, on Concom Road, in which they're using the UMass Cranberry Study that was done probably seven, eight years ago about putting solar fields on top of cranberry bogs, therefore it doesn't disturb land or anything else, and you can still grow cranberries, etc. And that project is coming up at Philly Lodge. I think it's half Concom, half in Wareham. I'd be overjoyed if all the solar projects came down the line like that, because that would stop everybody's complaints, because we're not clearing fields, we're using existing land that's been cleared for years, we don't run into mass heritage issues, etc. That's all. Thank you.
Judy?
Yeah, I have, I have a problem with some of the issues that Mr. Sullivan has raised. And I believe that those are valid issues, and that while I'm in favor of trying to craft a bylaw that encompasses all of the issues that people have been talking about, we, I don't believe that we have the vehicle, I don't believe the correct vehicle is in the starting lineup. And so I, I just think we should not go forward with it. We, you know, bring it into there, there are too many other issues in it that have to do with who submits. And Mr. Manise, the submission by department heads, the charter is silent on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you know, this is something that, you know, once again, you know, back in 2017, we had the, the work done off of Toby Road, and there was a human cry that came out then. You know, bandied about the idea of a solar study committee at that point. We, we didn't do it. So that leads us up to today. You know, one of the things we have to look at this in the context of is we need energy. And let's put it this way, I don't think, I don't think a lot of us are real happy with the idea of drilling in the Arctic National Wildlife Refuge, Refuge, or, you know, expanding drilling in off of Louisiana and Texas. Certainly, I don't think any of us would support, you know, fulfilling our electricity needs with more coal plants. I don't think that's really great for the environment. You know, dams, we've got the state actually encouraging people to take dams out, so water power, that may be something we rely on from Quebec, but hello, we have an invader, Derek's lap.
I'll get Sandy to match that one.
There you go. Because she won't jump in your lap, though.
I'll just die, that's all.
Yeah, you know, so if we're, if we're talking about, you know, the future of the planet, climate change, all that stuff, you know, the alternative energy sources like wind and solar are going to have to be, you know, what, what carries us into the future until somebody comes up with an expedite idea. So we have to think a little bit about that, too. Our issue is, you know, we're not Boston. Boston's all developed. You can't stick them up there. So guess where they're going to come? They're going to come here where the land is fairly cheap, and, and they're going to try to do this. So there's a balance that has to be had here. And, you know, my concern is that when you pass something that effectively chokes off the industry, where does this put us in the larger context of environmental concern, global warming, and things of that nature? Because, you know, I'm sure some people are going to shake their heads at me saying this, but you can't plug your iPhone into a tree. I mean, you just can't do it. So how, how do we balance this? How do we process out going forward? You know, is this something where we look at and a study committee eventually says, okay, you know, there needs to be development in this regard, but it's capped at X amount of acres per year is the, is the maximum that can be cleared, that sort of thing, so that you at least don't just have it, you know, overwhelming the town all at once. You control it better that way. I don't know. I don't know what the answers are. That would be for the study group to look at. So it's, none of this is, is just cut and dried, and, you know, you can jam a solution in the middle and, and make it go away. Jim, anything?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim. You had to end up.
Yeah.
Peter, it's possible too, that if we don't handle this right, that the state and the federal government, who as you well know are promoting Hyde to put in alternative energies such as wind and solar. to put in alternative energies such as wind and solar. They, they could, uh, change the rules and, and lock us out to everything.
You know.
Possible. Jim?
Uh, nobody's saying, well, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm in favor of solar, um, wind energy, uh, you know, appropriately, um, put in appropriate places. Um, some people are, are a little more, um, um, they have greater concerns than I do, um, related to the impacts. It's just where, where do we put them? And, and why is, I think, um, selectmen Slaven said, you know, look at what they're proposing on, on North, uh, is that North Carver? Road, um, and you know, that's a great idea that, that they did that down on Route 58 in Carver also. There's one on the bog on the left as you're going down there. And, um, so in, and you know, we have parking lots and buildings and places along highways or medians and, you know, on high tensions or gas lines, it's possible uses that have already been cleared. So, um, I, I, I think this is the, the, um, what, what people are bringing to the forefront is, is to utilize the spaces we've already cleared. We're not trying to kill anybody's ability to make money. We don't want to hurt the town's ability to collect revenues. Um, you can still collect revenues if they're put in other places. And, um, you know, they just want to take a step back and, and, you know, take a breath and pause. That's, that's the idea behind it. It's not to like stop it. It's like, whoa, whoa, let's just take a step back. Um, I mean, it could end up being like when we wanted to do the, um, the stuff was it back in 2003 or, uh, you know, related to, to housing and, and the size of the acreages, the lots and everything, everyone was starting to file their, uh, their development plans, the site plan reviews and everything for that. Um, we don't want to have that occur either, but, um, you know, we really need to take a look at it. I'm not against your proposal, uh, Chairman Title Bomb. I think it's a great idea. Um, you know, I just figured I'd throw it out there for, uh, some discussion.
Yep. No, and it's good because I know some of the people listening in are very concerned about the issue. And, you know, I, I don't want them thinking that they're just getting some pat dismissal from the board tonight on it. That, you know, we, we do take this seriously. And, you know, we, we do want to work with, with all the different constituencies here and try to come up with something that, you know, perhaps uses, uh, less, less land, uh, or involves less land clearing in some fashion and try to reuse some of the cleared land. I understand that. You know, part, part of this is too, uh, you know, how does it work, you know, for economies of scale? I mean, I'm not, you know, my grandfather was an electrical engineer. He built power plants. I'm not and I know nothing about them. I know nothing about the industry. So I think it behooves us to, to look into the question, what works? The other thing too is how do we, how do we go forward with this? We know that we can put, uh, solar panels on our homes. How do we look going forward at, at construction of large buildings? Do we want to make it part of our building, uh, requirements? That the trust work, uh, the rafters, what have you are strong enough to support eventual solar. Because what, you know, is economical for somebody to do now with today's technology that might limit the commercial applicability of solar to, to, to buildings of certain sizes, that could all change with technology. That could change going down the road. It could become feasible for somebody who's got a 20,000 square foot building to pop solar panels up and not just generate solar for their business within that building, but also to put it into the power grid. So the, these are all things that really need to be talked about. So that's, that's kind of what I'm looking, you know, hopefully a town meeting will establish such a committee and we vote to put it on a warrant. That, that's what I'm looking forward to do is take a, a comprehensive look at the issue. So that's that, uh.
We need to, um, address the harbor services permit articles. There are two of them.
Yep.
I move that we, um, approve the harbor services permits receipts reserved for appropriation account uh, for the spring 2021 town meeting.
Yeah, we've got two. One is a, one is an interest article and the other one is, is the, uh, for something that's already been
Correct.
Been started. The other is, is, uh, acquiring some new gear for the, uh, harbor master department.
Usual.
So, so your motion is for both articles, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. There are second?
Yes.
Second by Alan. Uh, any discussion? No? Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim? Uh, Jim? Uh, your mic's off.
Can't hear you.
This is driving me crazy. It's cutting me out and then it reloads again and then the mic's not on. So anyhow, um, is this, uh, these engines for the boat, is that one of the, um, requests?
One is 67,900 to be transferred for, um, maintenance and improvement. And the other is $3,800, uh, for maintenance improvements for the, um, payment of the bond anticipated note authorized with the onset floating dock.
But yeah, the, the floating dock.
Yeah.
Interest or? Uh, okay. Thank you.
There's a payment on the van. Yeah.
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 Payment on the boat.
You're welcome.
Jim, do you know the, did you see the other items, Jim? Do you want to read through those? What the, what's compromised?
Um, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to pull it up here on my, um, PDF and I can't see it. So yeah, it would be nice if, if we kind of read through the, some of the things.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll re, I'll read through if that's okay with you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
So the first one's a vehicle lease payment. So that's 22,200 and that's a final lease payment for two vehicles that were approved at the 2017 tet fall town meeting. Uh, $4,000, that's for vessel dockage. That's a patrol boat dockage for the 2021 boating season. Excuse me. Uh, officer firearms, safety and rescue equipment, 17,500. Update of firearms and non-lethal tasers in cooperation at the Wareham Police. This process allows both departments to utilize uniform equipment. In addition, the department looks obtained two cold water rescue suits and updates to all life jackets and waterway safety equipment. Communication upgrade 7,500, replace outdated base style communications radios and department vehicle. This communication equipment allows us to communicate with boaters and emergency responders and all handheld radio, uh, radio batteries. And then navigational aid updates, uh, $11,000 and that's to replace 32 worn and damaged navigation aids. Their chain and anchoring hardware and replace, uh, onset beaches 1500 foot swim line. So that compromises the, um, the, the bulk of the total of the funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Anything further? Uh, roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself. Yes, they're both on 500.
And, and that one was sent to me beforehand.
Ooh, okay.
You had it.
We can go down to charter changes, uh, subcategory F, which is charter changes. I had, um, the ladies in the office send all of the documentation, all of the explanations for chart one and chart two for the charter changes that were recommended. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that were not um, obvious after you got all of that stuff. So I would move.
We're just voting to put it on the wa, the warrant, right?
Yes, sir. So I would move putting, um, town charter chart two F on the warrant.
Here we have a motion by Judy.
Yeah.
Second by Jim?
I'll say.
Yeah, okay. That's why I thought the two fingers before. Uh, okay. Roll call, vote. Alan?
So, oh, you can, can you, yeah, you can hear.
Oh, do you, do you have questions?
Rose up again.
Would it be easier if you called Derek's telephone?
I just wanted to, we're just voting to put everything on.
That's correct.
Correct. This is.
Yes, sir.
So, um, you know, let's just make it easy and, um, we're just putting bring it on the warrants, no discussion really. You, you know, this, this group did a, a good job and worked hard. I'm frozen again, right?
Yes, you are.
Do you want to change your motion to make it F through I?
Yeah, let's just, just. So we can get it all done with. They worked very hard and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I move that we approve the, um, inclusion of town charter chart two subsections F, G, H, and I.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Judy, uh, seconded by Patrick to put F through I on. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes, 500 for all. Uh, all we have left now, uh, that takes care of the actual articles uh, that, that we're doing that have been submitted to us from the town administrator, town department, so on and so forth committees. Um, we do have the petition article for the naming of the new elementary school. It was dropped off by Mr. Flaherty et al.
I thought we were going to put that on for them. I thought that we already made that clear to them the last time.
Yeah, but you know what? They, they liked, uh, getting the signatures because I think they, they, they made a a, a point of saying that to me that they, that, that they wanted to be the petitioners. So.
The article, um, the naming of the new elementary school located at 63 Minnit Avenue, Wareham, Mass. To be placed on the spring 201, 2021.
Don't have to do that. It's automatic.
Yeah, it goes on by operation of law. So there's no need for us to vote on it.
Okay.
And the same applies to the local initiative, uh, program article that was dropped off this afternoon. Uh, they hadn't had a chance to verify the signatures on that one, but it, it goes on the warrant. And if the signatures turn into an issue, then it's a matter for the moderator to declare the article out of order at town meeting.
What was that, Peter? I don't think I saw that.
That came in late this afternoon at like 4:30. This was presented by, uh, Brenda Extrem et al. And it would, uh, it would alter the zoning, uh, to allow some local initiative programs under affordable housing, uh, and so on and so forth. I don't want to describe the article because everybody should read it for themselves, but that, that's basically what it is. Wow. So. So that came in today. So, uh, we will have both sets of these petitioners come to a future meeting, uh, so they can present their articles. So we can make our votes whether to recommend. Alan?
What's the status on the, uh, the miniatures and stuff? That was a citizen's petition. My understanding was it was going to roll over as well.
The which one?
The banning of, uh, miniatures.
Nips.
Nips, miniatures.
Yeah, there wasn't anything submitted.
My understanding was it was going to roll over from the previous.
Well, we can't roll over a petition article because no action was taken. Everything that didn't go on, that everything that went into consent agenda for the fall town meeting unfortunately gets dumped.
But they could bring it to the special, Mr. Slaven.
Yeah, we'd have to get more signatures. That would be the difference.
Mr. Chairman, if I would, if we were going to do the, um, petitioner for the school change and put it on anyways, maybe we should do that for the, the nip bottle as well. I mean, that's.
I agree.
Why not?
Yeah, I agree. Why not?
The only reason I bring it up, I, I asked the question. I'm not going to get anybody in trouble, but I was told that we didn't have to do anything.
Yeah, but the, the, the difference is that he turned in a new petition with new signatures for this, for this upcoming meeting.
So we'll take a vote on it.
We, we could put it on as, uh, for ourselves, we could put it on, but we can't put it on for a petitioner.
Yeah, cor- correct. You're right. No, what I was saying is we did that for the school on the last go around. We put their, our, we put an article on and then they submitted a petition again on top of it. So.
I moved that the selectman, um.
What, a nip bottle ban?
The nip bottle ban article, which was previously submitted by, um, citizen petition onto the spring 2021 annual.
Second.
Jim?
Totally against this.
Jim had a question?
It's frozen again.
Yeah. He's got the finger.
With a, with a smile.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we were, uh, we'd do it on the special, but whatever you want to do since the annual is basically.
Okay, fine. I'll put it on the special. I, I've changed my motion to be on to the special.
I'll revoke my second for that.
This is a stupid thing.
Jim, at least it froze. Is Jim back in this?
No, he's frozen.
Um, as long as we're, the process we're using, everyone's good with it. I don't know what our, um, esteemed attorney thinks on this. Are we good with this, Mr. Bowen?
Yes, sir.
I'm frozen again.
Okay, so, so.
We're going to roll call vote out of you guys while I still got Jim breathing here. Alan?
Yes.
What is this? To put it on the special?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a no on this one.
Okay, Patrick's a no. Uh, Jim?
Give us the finger, Jim.
I really would have liked to have asked for the question.
Give us the thumb up. That, okay, there's a yes from Jim. I'll, I'll accept that as a yes. Judy?
Yes.
Uh, myself, yes, 410. That will go on the special.
Peter, we didn't get to say anything. I'd like to say something about it.
Go ahead.
Um, first off, uh, I get what everybody's trying to do and believe me, I applaud it. And, uh, the fact that, uh, these things are a pain in the, pain in the tail and they're everywhere. And I hate it and I hate to see them and I wish there was a way. But this is a, uh, by doing it town by town, this is a financial hit for the, uh, for the liquor stores. In fact, um, you might as well, I could tell you right now, you could put out of business six, six, at least six that I know of, you'd put out of business because they make all their money on nips. Um, and literally they make all their money on the nips. So when you cut the nips and everybody will just go to the next town to get them. And that's, uh, that's a bad thing and that's why I'm not in favor of it. I think the state should take the handle on this and say, okay, yeah, we're going to get rid of nips. I mean, they got rid of, uh, they talk a lot about plastic, but nobody will step up to the plate and do what they need to do. And this, and they're asking us to do something that's going to hurt our own business. And I'm just not up for that. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Understood.
You know what's interesting when they, um, and this is, I probably shouldn't talk, but you think about it, they, they banned the selling of the Lucy's.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Exactly. I mean, they need to step up to the plate and fix this problem is what they need to do. So.
Okie doke. But I think that wraps up the, uh, spring annual warrant.
Uh, I move to pay the payment under 12, authorize the payment to the law office of Richard P. Bowen.
No, we have to close the warrant first.
Oh, crap. Okay. I move to close the warrant.
Second.
Okay, motion to close the spring annual town meeting warrant by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. The warrant is closed. Uh, now you can go ahead and pay the attorney, but what, don't we want to hire him first?
We're going to pay him first and then we'll hire him.
Okay.
Authorize the payment of the law.
Pay him first?
Yes, Law Office of Richard P. Bowen.
Uh, that's wrong. That's something wrong with that.
Second.
Okay. Motion to, motion to pay attorney Bowen by Judy, seconded by Alan. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes, please.
Jim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. So he will get paid. Let's jump back and get him appointed.
I move to appoint, uh.
What about that one, huh? He said?
Move to appoint the law office of Richard P. Bowen as town.
I can't believe he still wants to do it.
He's got gray hair.
P T Barnum had something to say about that. Uh, so we have a motion by Judy and a second by
Second.
Alan, roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Myself, yes, 500. You're in. Myself, yes, 500. You're in for another year.
We should make, we should make public, uh, the salary. Well, we don't have to number if you don't want to, whether it's the same salary or not.
It's the same.
Thank you, sport.
Oh, I like that. Derek does too, I'll bet.
Don't want to take a cut and pay?
That wasn't part of the motion. You're out of order. See, I'm protecting you here, Rich.
Oh, thank you.
Same pay we get.
Yeah, exactly.
Raise on that one.
All right. So we got through town business. Do we have any town administrator report to hear?
Uh, no, no, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, liaison initiative reports. I think we already kind of did those. Jim, did you have anything? Cause I think you were absent for that part.
Um, no, I'll, I'll leave it be. I, I don't want to kill the internet connection I have right now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Do more fingers.
Well, we did approve the minutes already, so that just leaves one thing.
I'll switch to a drone.
Second.
Can I have one thing to put?
Yes.
Did we ever, did we ever, um, decide anything on this signage for Audubon?
No.
No.
So I, I mean, I, I, it's no big deal for me one way or the other. Um, but I, I just, you know, it was just kind of left hanging. So anyhow, maybe next time.
Yep.
Or not. I, I don't know.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Alan, seconded by Patrick. Roll call vote. Alan?
So I'm, I'm set. So you guys can hear.
Okay. Alan said yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Jim? Oh, he froze again.
Yes.
We got him in, we got him in. Okay. Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you, Wareham. Uh, we will see you next week. Take care.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye, Jim. Good luck with that connection.